For any meeting.
Okay, that's right. You're right. I'm wrong.
No.
My bad.
We don't care who's right and who's wrong. Uh, Chan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, beautiful, man. Okay, we're gonna recall this meeting to order at, uh, four oh five. Now, um, if in Chan, I'm not sure you heard this, uh, Greg was in order, but I called the meeting to order and I made a motion. Add five A and five B to the agenda. And that's, um, under consideration and one of it is we were going to consider the creation of a new position. And five B would consider the appointment of an individual to that position. And this is based on our discussions at our meeting yesterday. And, uh, Greg said, uh, he was in favor of that.
I am. That's fine.
You are. Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you.
That that's adding it to the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, now, uh, and again, apologies to Charlene, but I would ask that we approve the minutes of February fourth. Gentlemen, if you've had a chance to review them or if there's any corrections or questions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, and, uh, I, uh, I approve also, so that's unanimous. Number three, I'd like to consider the appointment of John Chinkowski as a full member of the Crystal Pond Park Commission for the term February eighteenth. Through, uh, of this year through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Yes.
I'll, I'll move that.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a second?
Yep.
Okay. And I also am in favor, so it's unanimous. John, welcome again, and again, thank you for your support of our various programs.
Thank you, John.
And looking at your qualifications, I think you're a perfect fit for the team.
Absolutely. Number four, I'd like to consider the appointment of Stuart Peaslee as an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency. For the term February eighteenth, this year through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. I also am in favor. Stuart, thank you very much for continuing to serve.
He's muted.
Especially since you've been on this commission before. That's fantastic. You're bringing past experience with you, which is great.
And he's willing to continue, which I think is great. We, we're very appreciative. Um, number five, consider the appointment of John Davis as a member of the assessment, I'm sorry, Board of Assessment Appeals. For the term February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one through November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, was there any, any biographical information provided on that?
Um.
I didn't have it in my packet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know the guy. All right.
Okay, well, I will, I will mention, uh, I'm gonna give you a brief biography. He was approved and, uh, nominated by the Republican Town Committee at their meeting last night. Now, uh, he's a retired commercial banker. Uh, he lives in East Woodstock. Uh, he grew up in Woodstock, but we don't want to hold that against him. Um, and he's moved away, but has moved back since twenty twelve. He is, a friend of his, Rebecca Hyde recommended it, recommended this to him. Uh, she also serves on the Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, he, he understands that there's some guides available, which we will be providing to him. Uh, and he felt that his, uh, experience in commercial lending would be helpful in this.
Is he, is he the person, there was a Davis that lived in town who moved to Pennsylvania? Is this the same guy? He's moved back?
I, I don't know, John. Did you move to Pennsylvania?
My dad did. Or my dad briefly lived in outside Philadelphia. You don't look old enough to remember my dad.
No. Okay.
Um.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm satisfied now that you've said that, so I will second the motion.
What, because you knew his dad?
No, because, because you explained his, his, his background and, 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 um, and, and he's here. So yeah, I'll, I'll do that.
All right, um, I, he's one of my closest personal friends. We've had a number of telephone conversations over the last week. So that counts as something too. Um, he also, he serves on the Board of New Rexbury Land Trust. Uh, and he's the Assistant Treasurer of his church. Uh, which again, he's somebody that's willing to get involved and I think has some, uh, background experience that I think would lend itself to the Board of Assessment Appeals. So, um, Greg, you seconded it, um, or you, you moved to accept and Chan?
Yes.
Chandler, Chandler moved to accept it and I seconded it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I will third it. So again, John, as I, as I mentioned to you on the phone the other day, thank you very much for your, uh, willingness to serve and it's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you for the kind words and I look forward to it. At least I think I do. We'll find out.
Thanks, John.
Is, is this the, is this the position taking the place that where Ed, Ed Larson was?
Yes, well, yes, it's the position in the sense that, um, he's replacing a Republican because Ed was a Republican. Um, it's not replacing the chair of that. That would be up to the board to elect a new chair.
Sure, as a member of the board. That's what it says.
Yep.
Yep, that's it.
And the other thing that, uh, came up in conversation recently was just issues along, it's very difficult to have two people on a board because if you disagree on something, there's no majority, so you'd have to have an odd number. So I think, um, that three people, it lends itself very much to any board, uh, as a minimum number.
It's good.
Okay, um, I, as I proposed and was passed, I wanted to, uh, under five A, uh, recommend, and this came out of discussions yesterday. We wanted to create the position of the Finance Director for the town of Woodstock. And the reason for this, and I'm, I'm doing this primarily for our guest today, uh, because the other gentleman on the Board of Selectmen, we discussed it at length yesterday. Um, approximately a hundred and twenty out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns in Connecticut now have a Finance Director. The days of the Treasurer for many towns have gone by. That was somebody that came in and did basically check the bills. Um, check the income, the revenue that came in, made sure the bills got paid and signed the checks. And that was in a nutshell, pretty much it. Um, so given that the majority of towns have created that, um, we decided we, we would create this position. As I, I don't know sarcastically said, but I'm, I'm very sincere about this. We're trying to move some things into the twenty-first century and I think this is a good move. We've also found that the person that we're considering for this position, um, is somebody that goes above and beyond, makes decisions about investments, has moved large amounts of money, uh, on behalf of the town around to get the best, um, interest rates, uh, looks for the best interest of the town. So it's not just a matter of coming in and signing checks. Uh, you know, and, and paying the bills. So that I would ask gentlemen if we could vote because when this came up yesterday in executive session, we can't vote. So could I hear a motion to create the position of Finance Director for the town? Okay, thank you. A second?
Second.
Second, okay, unanimous. Thank you.
This, I'd just like to add something here. This is, this is a move that real, as you said, bring the town into the twenty-first century or wherever we are, but it's putting a person in, in, in the, in charge. Because down the road, if you left it as the treasurer, you might get somebody who didn't know beans about a lot of the stuff that's going on through in that, and that, and that office and that function. So this is a hired position. And that's, that's the right way to go. And, 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 and will, will the town will be better off for this, this, this move?
Especially if, if down the road, we need to replace that person. We've got a much better handle on job description and, uh, it will help our applicants to the right direction.
Yes.
The other thing for, um, before we move on, uh, we're all in agreement of creating the position. Um, one of the things that we are gonna have to work out in the next few weeks or so is job descriptions. We also will require a treasurer. So we're gonna have to come up with a job description for that. We're gonna have to figure out issues around payment for their services. I envision it, and, and, uh, this is not in stone, but I envision it as somebody that might come in for two or three hours a week. Review bills and sign checks, and that's basically it. And we have no other responsibilities. However, that treasurer would answer to the, uh, Finance Director. All right, John?
Reporting, reporting to the Board of Finance, presenting budgets and, and all that would be not the treasurer, but the Finance Director.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Um, okay.
So you need, you need to have a motion to appoint certain person?
I know, I, I'm not there yet. That's five D. Um, what I'd like to do is propose that we appoint Karen Fitzpatrick to the new position. And most of you know, some of the new people do not know Karen Fitzpatrick is our current Treasurer. Um, and this is created based on what skill she brings to the table and what skills she's been using to benefit the town for the number of years that she's been here. So, um, again, I, I, I'm proposing that we appoint Karen Fitzpatrick to the new position.
I'll move that we appoint Karen Fitzpatrick to that position.
And I will offer a second.
Okay, it's unanimous. Now. Um, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, I also, uh, believe it or not, Karen Fitzpatrick is here. So if you, seriously, if anybody, um, that is just joining us, are members of the public, if you will, if you have questions for her about, um, why, we, we, we discussed this extensively yesterday on your executive session. And we, we just saw the need. And as I said, we've got a hundred and twenty-plus towns in Connecticut out of a hundred and sixty-nine that do have this position. Um, it was very apparent to us why it's necessary, needed, and certainly beneficial to Woodstock. So that's why we did it. If you have specific questions, Karen is here and is very willing to answer any questions that the general public has.
Yeah, I have a question. Um. Here, let me turn into a person. Um, just, how does it work? This was an elected position. Uh, so the treasurer is an elected position. This is a hired position. So in a sense, you're taking away a responsibility from the townspeople and bringing it under the Board of Selectmen, I would assume would be the people hiring. How does that work legally? I mean, what's the history of having an elected treasurer?
Actually, well, the history seriously probably goes back to colonial times and I can't give you the history. The hit, it will still remain an elected position. And it will be announced to the, um, the two board, uh, the chairs of the two parties in town that it will still remain an elected position. For the interim, it will be, it will remain a Republican. And they, the Republican Town Committee will have to appoint somebody in the interim. In the general election coming up in November, that position will be open.
And Karen would have to step down. She would have to resign her elected seat.
So you could change the job description of an elected position at will?
We're adding, we're adding, no, no, the job description is, is based on state statute.
Oh, okay.
The treasurer.
Cause I know historically Barbara Rich, I mean, we've done a lot of, you know, she did things way beyond just paying bills. We borrowed money. We paid back the money. We did budgets, all sorts of things. So it does sound like a big change of the job description. Okay, so I'll, I'll look at state statute and see what it says. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, no, I was gonna say Barbara, when she was doing it, did not work on the budget. And the other thing is that this concept was never mentioned before in Woodstock. And it's not like we, we, the Board of Selectmen had a brilliant idea, but, but we were looking at other towns and how they're handling it because as you can imagine, it's become much more complex over the years and it has developed into something much more than quote unquote treasurer. And that's why we made the decision, the treasurer will still remain.
Okay.
Can you read the state statute, Rebecca?
Yeah.
As far as the duties for its treasurer, a town treasurer. Karen Fitzpatrick does three times the number of jobs than the state description. Um, which is why we think that it's just a better way to do it. Uh, if she only did what the statute said she had to do, this town would fall apart. Um, so we just want to recognize and, and create this position that makes it so that now there's a, a good list of all the responsibilities of the Financial Director.
And Rebecca, if I could just jump in one more time, the, um, uh, this is something that we have been very involved with town attorneys and labor attorneys from day one. So it's not like, you know, as I said, that the three of us came up with this brilliant idea, because I'm not sure that we would, you know? And, uh, but so the attorneys have been involved on what's the best for the town.
Would this be a union position?
No.
No.
Um, yes, Charlene?
Look, I just want to go back to something. Did you, did I hear you correctly that you said that, um, this Finance Director would, um, be the person in charge and that the treasurer would answer to them?
Yes.
So how does an elected official answer to an employee of the town?
It's more of a management position. It's an elected official, but they would answer, you're answering to a manager in that department, even though they're elected.
And they set it up this way in other towns?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, um, John?
Uh, when you said, I think you said it was something like a hundred and twenty of the hundred and sixty-nine towns in Connecticut have the finance position. If you were to look only at those towns that were comparable to Woodstock in the size of their budget or the complex sum measure of population or something, would the proportion still be that way? Cause I, cause I could imagine that the Hartford's and the Bridgeports and the Stamford's and all those kinds of big bustling places would have more of a need of a Finance Director than smaller places, which basically have a school and some highways to take care of and not much more than that. I mean, it's not to say that's not complicated, but I'm just sort of curious if we looked at towns that are more like Woodstock than Hartford is, although Hartford's probably a bad example since they're going broke, but that aside.
But have, no, but they just have treasure. Right, yeah, we, um, we're, we're just consulting here. Karen is saying that like Pomeroy, Eastford and towns like that have treasurers. Um, she does have, and I'm looking at sheets here, which, uh, she does have information, John, with comparable, uh, populations. And those that have, uh, Finance Directors, but she said that in, in answer to your question, she'd have to do more of an in-depth study.
No, I, I was just curious. That's okay.
And Karen, Karen said she could further explain, so I'm gonna turn it over to Karen.
Um, I, I just wanted to say, so, um, I've been working for the town for close to fifteen years. Um, I started as a part-time Recreation Director. Um, I also worked as a Highway Assistant and then I was hired as the Bookkeeper and the Assistant Treasurer before I became the intern and then the actual elected official. Um, so I have a, a very good knowledge. I work with a lot of boards and commissions for finance purposes, um, to make sure that, you know, we're keeping people, following policy and procedure. The problem that we've had is over the last several years, this position has evolved from more than just an elected position. We have shorted hours. We have our bookkeeper who has added responsibilities as payroll. So a lot of the jobs that I did as an Assistant Bookkeeper is no longer happening in that office. So, um, I maintain a lot more responsibility, which is comparable to many towns' Finance Directors. Um, and you know, goes above and beyond. I, I work on the audit. I do the town's budget. I do both the, um, the, the job as the bookkeeper slash treasurer and other duties that are required as a Finance Director. Um, I have pinpointed, I'd be more than happy to email somebody, um, a list of the current duties that I'm doing in this town that are above and beyond an actual elected position. So the, the, the question is, is that yes, you can elect somebody who may be able to, um, have some skills. But I've gone above and beyond. I've taken classes and became certified for government accounting. I have taken professional development classes continuously over the past several years, um, in order to be able to understand what our managers need us to report. Because things have changed so much over the last several years. It's just not the same as it has been maybe ten years ago. So I mean, if anybody would like me to email them the list of the current duties that I do that are above and beyond an actual elected position, I'd be more than happy to send those to you. And we're not, yes, actually, um, as I was just being consulted over here with Crystal, we're not changing duties of an elected position. We're just changing that separate, keeping it separate from the actual duties that a Finance Director does on top of what a treasurer. Um, I don't know if anybody has any other, any other questions.
Yes, Charlene?
Um, when will this take effect? Will it be at, at the time of the election in November or?
I think before.
How, what will the timing be?
I, I think we're working with the attorneys to make it happen sooner than later. Um, once the, um, schematics are completed, I would actually have to step down. And then, um, when I step down as Treasurer, that's when the Republican Town Committee would need to find a replacement. Uh, recommend them to the selectors so that they could appoint somebody in the intern basis.
But then also both parties are gonna have to be informed. They can hear me. They don't have to see me. Both parties would have to be informed that, um, this position of Treasurer would be available every four years and that, you know, anybody, we would have an interim now and then in November, um, either party could, um, nominate someone to serve as Treasurer. But there are some things, again, working with the attorneys, job descriptions, uh, responsibilities. Um, you know, the, for both positions, you know, that's really, we pretty much know what they are for Finance Director, but for the Treasurer, we have to go back to the basics of what the Treasurer does. And that's all handled by statute. So that's about where we're at. So as far as the timeline, uh, Charlene, I, you know, I can't tell you. I think, uh, in the coming weeks, is, is that fair to say? Any other questions about the position or about, or for Karen or? No? I don't know other, well, what? Oh, no, um, Chan, we can see you and I know you're on the phone. Do we have folks that are on, uh, the telephone that we can't see that may have questions or? No? Okay. No, I just want to make sure that we, you know, address everybody's, you know, questions, concerns. Okay, um, consider authorizing a memorandum of agreement in adopting a resolution for federal fiscal years two thousand and nineteen. I'm sorry, yeah, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty State Homeland Security Grant Program. Gentlemen, this was put into your packet and tells you nothing. But the reason it tells you nothing is this is from the federal government. So we've all had experience with them. Uh, we all pay taxes. Uh, so anyway, what this means, and I'm looking at a twenty-seven page uh, program here that I was going to highlight and hit the high points for you. Basically what it is is for a two-year period going retroactive to twenty nineteen. Um, we will be accepting funds from the federal government going through, uh, from Homeland Security, going through, um, the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Uh, including Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Money would be available to us for purchase of materials that we may use or there would be materials in our region that we could borrow to meet our needs in, in Woodstock. And that's all that it is. And gentlemen, you also, I believe in your packet, have a copy of the, um, authorizing the resolution. Basically, it's that, uh, Judy Wahlberg, who's a town clerk, will be signing this next week. Uh, resolved that we're gonna enter into and deliver to the State of Connecticut Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents seems appropriate. So that I could sign this to involve us in a relationship for various equipment that we may need in the future. Uh, this is something that's being offered to a variety of towns in Connecticut. So, um, I don't know. If you have additional questions, gentlemen, I can certainly, uh, furnish copies of this, um, twelve-page document to you. Any questions?
Are you looking for an au, a, a motion to authorize?
Yeah, basically, uh, yes, I, I'm looking for a motion to authorize this memorandum of agreement and adopt a resolution for these two years for me to enter into an agreement.
Great.
Homeland Security.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will make it three. Thank you. Um, tax, tax rebates, we have none. Um, correspondence and announcements. Um. I do have applications and this would be for, uh, Stuart Peaslee, John Chinkowski and, uh, John Davis for the various positions that they've been appointed to. Other than that, I do not have any. At our next meeting, there are some that came in, uh, too late to address tonight. Um, announcements, I really have none. Uh, Greg and Chan, I don't know if you have any?
Are there, are there public comments first?
Well, I'm not down to public comments here.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
It's okay. I didn't know if you had any announcements relative to Board of Selectmen. Okay. All right, um.
Well, I do, but I'll bring it up under other from the committee. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, public comments. Anyone that's either on the phone or, yes.
I, I want to thank you and the Republican Town Committee for acting promptly on John Davis's, uh, application. Since we have business coming up in a couple of weeks, it'll be really useful to have him with us. And I wanted to mention, um, the Board of Assessment Appeals is having a little bit of an issue with the assessor because historically, her assistant has done all the secretarial work for us, including putting meeting notices, uh, into the newspaper in a timely fashion. Now, I always thought actually that the town clerk did that, but I learned today that it was the Assistant Assessor who was putting the notices in for the Board of Assessment Appeals. And there should have been a notice in probably last week or two weeks ago for the deadline for the appeals, which is the twentieth Saturday. Um, and she said, even though her understanding was that her, that Emily would prefer that she not do any of that, she did put a notice in, but it's only coming out in the Villager tomorrow. Um, and then we need to have a notice up for our March eighth meeting. It has to be ten days, so ideally it would go in the Villager next week and get in there Monday morning. Um, but I don't even know if Cheryl, the Assistant Assessor, works on Monday mornings. So basically I'm asking that you folks basically, I'm asking that you folks um help us straighten this out and and be clear as to who does what responsibilities because it's really not easy for us as part-time, you know, assessment appeal members to do the kind of secretarial work that needs to be done. So.
All right, um, I think one of the things that that um yeah, we we are going to work that out with the Board of Assessment Appeals and also the uh Assessor's Office. My understanding is that that you are a separate entity or a separate agency. Um, so yeah, we are going to have to work that out um on, you know, who's doing what, when, and that sort of thing. Um, and that's, that's in the process. I know John, he and I talked about it. In in fact, uh Rebecca, do you and Ron, I know John doesn't, but do you and Ron have the handbook for Board of Assessment Appeals?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, good.
And I have to say, it doesn't say anything specifically in there about whether or not you can ask the assessor's assistant to run copies for you, you know? It talks about your relationship with the assessor, that you want to be on good terms and and deal with issues of does she come to your meetings? Do you meet with her separately? But there's nothing in there that says, you know, don't touch the assistant. And it's, you know, we're talking about many, many years that the assistant in that office has helped us. Because some of the work is, you know, looking up things in their files, getting, pulling paperwork, copying paperwork. It has always made sense that that person would be um of assistance unless you really see it as an adversarial relationship, which we never have. I mean, it's always been rather a cooperative relationship of, you know, if there are specific issues that need to be sorted out between the assessor and a member of the public, they get sorted out, but it's never been like, you know, we're at odds or at war with the assessor. So.
Right.
Yeah.
I I think we've got to kind of do a workload division, like who's responsible for what. And I think that's something that I've been aware of in speaking with Ed Larson in the past. And and in speaking with you, Rebecca, and then also with the assessor and the assistant assessor. So we're going to have to figure out, you know, workload responsibilities, who's responsible for what. And I understand your uh concerns and frustration. Um, and I think historically, there are many times there were things that were done historically that I'm not sure were done correctly. And that's just me. I'm the new kid on the block. Um, so I'm going to use that excuse.
Yeah, it's fine. My immediate concern, yeah, my immediate concern is just this notice for Monday morning. So I emailed Emily and C.C. Cheryl and C.C. Brenda. And if we can just find a way to get that notice out and into the paper Monday morning, that would be really helpful.
Okay, and also, um Cheryl does work Mondays.
Okay.
She works four days a week.
Okay, but she has to have somebody okay, because right now she feels Emily really doesn't want her doing this. So.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so what you could do.
I'll look into it Monday.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Um.
Can I raise a question?
Yeah.
Is there someone in in the uh among the town hall staff that does the minutes for the meetings of this committee?
No, I've been doing them.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a pretty simple form.
No. Okay.
There you are.
Alan Barker, is that you? You know, you, oh. Alan Barker.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing today?
Good. You're all wondering who am I talking to? Alan and I met last night when he showed up for a meeting at the town hall. And I was leaving at, you know, the usual time, seven o'clock. Anyway, uh, we chatted briefly. He was here for a meeting and I explained it because of COVID, all the meetings were online. So he asked, he wanted to attend a Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I said, hey, tomorrow afternoon, four o'clock. So he obviously found how to get here. Uh, lives in West Woodstock. Uh, very interested in in uh, you know, what's going on in town. So uh Alan, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you too. Thank you.
Uh okay, anything else, public comments or questions or, yes, Charlene?
Um, just two quick questions. First of all, is the the board's meeting on Monday going to be in person or is that a Zoom meeting?
It's uh, it's in person. I mean, we, we had a budget meeting yesterday, and it was in person and it was, um, the agenda was on and the public could have come in. In fact, we unlocked the back door. So if somebody wanted to come in and we had chairs set up, there were only, um, it was just the board and 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 the treasurer at the time, Karen, and we were going over the budget page by page.
So is is that the case for Monday's meeting also?
Yes, you're most, you're most welcome.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, is this, just one to clarify my own head more than anything. My understanding is that the Board of Selectmen has to have a quorum in order to conduct business, correct? And that quorum could be either two or three people, depending on how many are attending, correct?
True.
So in order to pass a motion, the affirmative votes have to be a majority of that quorum, correct?
It, I'm sorry?
So if if you're voting on something, unless, and let's say you have three members present.
Yes.
At least two of them have to vote yes, correct?
Yes.
But if the quorum is only two people, if, if, if one person abstains, then you don't have an affirmative vote of the majority, do you?
Well, the other thing is, I'm not sure we would meet if we only had two of us there. It's never occurred that way. But I mean, a quorum is two-thirds. And so it would take two out of the three to vote to pass something, but I'm not sure that that and and Chan, you've been around longer than I, I'm not sure that I would meet. Like if we were going to have a meeting and Greg and I were either on Zoom or physically together and Chan called and said, hey, I can't make it. If he could do it on the telephone, that would count as a meeting. But if something came up, you know, where there was a family emergency and one of us couldn't make it, I'm not sure that I would allow the meeting to take place.
Well, my question, it it, this is kind of been in the back of my head now for a month or so brewing. So I'll bring up the specific instance. At the December seventeenth meeting, when you opened the bids for the Highway Department auction of those two old pieces of equipment.
Yes.
There were only two members present. And Chan had to abstain. So there was only one affirmative vote that passed those two questions. And what I'm wondering is, was that legal? And I am only bringing up the subject so that it doesn't turn around and 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 bite the town uh or cause a problem.
What?
Is, is something.
Charlene, I appreciate that because I constantly am calling the attorney to make sure because I I have this terrible paranoid fear of being bitten in the butt. So, um, do you have an answer to that? No.
Jay?
Yeah, yes.
That that was the, I, that was the meeting that I was late for, and I apologize to you and to the board for that. It was unavoidable. It was delayed. And I, I came on about twenty minutes or so after the, after the uh meeting began. And that that item on the 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 awarding of the bids had already taken place. When I, when I, I joined the meeting.
Did we review that for your uh for you, for you, Greg, when you did come in late?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay, uh Crystal's checking the minutes right now.
Well, I'm suggesting is that if for some reason it's at all questionable, perhaps it would be appropriate to do some type of mitigating action at this point so that it won't be a problem in the future. That's all.
Can, can, to to solve that problem, do we want to revote? Awarding the bids, revote on it?
It really wasn't a vote taken. It was a matter of we opened bids, but there wasn't there wasn't anything to move on. It was just a matter of opening the bids. And the first selectman accepted them.
Well.
Well, it's recorded in the minutes as a vote. Two votes.
One in favor and one abstained. And I was, I wasn't there at that time.
But but the only thing that I can mention about that, in Charlene, you're correct, uh, one abstained and one voted in favor. I voted in favor. We only had one bid. And the bid was from Chan, and that's why he abstained. And there was only one bid, so it's not like, you know, I was going to put it out again for additional bids. So I thought that was legit, you know, at that time.
Well, I I do understand you, and it's perfectly logical, and everything was done with appropriate intent. My question is, was it legal because one vote is not a majority of two? And that was the quorum.
Okay, I'm I'm going to uh refer that to the town attorney. Because your your point's well taken, and it's conceivable something like this could happen in the future. So I'm going to refer that to the town attorney, and um I will either get back to you personally or address this in a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um okay, any other public comments or questions? Yes.
Sorry, uh, I just checked my emails and Cheryl actually answered me. The notice she put in for this week did include the dates for our upcoming meeting. So my troubles about the Monday morning deadline are moot.
Okay, I, did she copy me on that? I believe she did.
She did, yeah.
My afternoon, you don't, none of you care about my afternoon, so I'm not going to regale you. But um my afternoon was a little nuts, and there were, I know that I did get two emails from her, and it was relative to dates for your group. Um, but but I I didn't know what it said. So, okay, so you're all set. That's good.
Oh, actually, I have one other question, sorry, but while I have you. Um she dumped a bunch of packets in our bin. She said, am I allowed in the town hall? Are we allowed to come in and look at materials for us?
Is it a matter of looking or picking up?
Um, I don't know.
Well, no, seriously.
She said one of them was pretty thick.
All right, what if it's to if it's to pick up materials, what we normally do is somebody rings the front doorbell and then somebody will answer and and they'll say, hi, I'm here to pick up, you know, widgets, and then somebody will run the widgets out to them.
So I can't come in and peruse? I should pick up and leave with the materials?
Uh, yeah, that would be acceptable. Or or, you know, we can make arrangements for copies.
She said one of them was like a Bible, so we'll see. Okay, I'll work it out. Thanks. Never mind.
All right, let me, let me check with Cheryl on that. And the other thing is, we have had, again, going back to uh, you know, having a meeting on Monday and I I invited Charlene to join us. We've been meeting downstairs, like, and for instance, we're going to be doing some registration of folks, critique for vaccines. And that's going to be held downstairs so that it's away from the upstairs, but people can enter the downstairs door, come into the main hallway down there. So um if, depending upon what I get from Cheryl on Monday, Rebecca, it's conceivable you could come in and we could bring the materials down there if it's something that you have to read.
Yeah, which it would also be a lot easier if we could, the three of us could meet or the three of us could meet with an applicant if we're dealing with large amounts of material, but we don't have to decide that now. I'm just I'll mention that again. I know that, I know what's going on with the rates in the county, but we'll see. Yeah.
Hey, listen, actually, uh, the rates are getting better.
Yeah, I know. They're only three hospitalization.
They're not great, but I'm I'm pleased and encouraged they're getting better.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Um, anything else? Um, question, questions or comments? No? Okay, I'm going to move to um other from committee. Uh, Greg, you said you had something.
I do. I have some good news. Can you use some good news?
Oh, man, I'll tell you, given this week, I can use any good news that you can share.
So this has to do with the the utility pole project on County Road.
Okay.
Right, which for those that are not aware what's going on up there, there is a slew of telephone poles that Eversource replaced, put in new poles, and they had to move the the Eversource wires from the old pole to the new pole. And then s- um Spectrum did this similar thing, but Frontier was lagging way behind. So you had new poles and you had old poles and you had wires all the way up there. We're trying to get them addressed and cleaned up and moved. And so I had a talk with people at Frontier, as you had requested me to do, and John on Navarrohead and uh a guy named Ken Vivian, who's the district area and local district manager for for Frontier. And they started the project and they they've gotten um so far ten poles um that they have tightened up and transferred wires and things like that. That's that's underway. Pro- project is in progress, and there and there are a total of seventy-eight poles that he counted. This is what has to be done. And when they're all done, uh as they go along, they will be moving the poles, the the old poles, not not, we'll have to wait for Eversource. Because he said Frontier actually owns those poles.
Well, that's even better.
They will, yes, it is. It's much, much simpler. He's on it. And they have uh committed that after the twenty-fifth of February, the pole moving will begin. And he said they're, but he said they're they're moving ahead, you know, transferring the wires and tightening things up and getting it going. So I don't know how long it's going to take. But I mean, really, this this project goes from one seventy-one on County Road all the way up to one sixty-nine and then over one sixty-nine down to Woodstock Road down over by Muddy Brook Fire Department. And I'm not sure if it even goes even further than that.
It goes to, it goes to Doug Hill.
Okay, all right. But but he's got seventy-eight that he counted, but he said it's it's likely even more. But they're working it. So that's good news.
Hey, Greg, seriously, thank you very much. And uh, you know, for people that think that, you know, the selectmen, we just sit around and don't do anything. Um, we had tried for a long time to get the various power and and phone companies squared away because we had double poles from one seventy-one to Doug Hill Road, and we finally, we had had it. So we got the contact name, and we basically, we threatened them twice, and when nothing was done, we set Greg Klein loose on them. And he got the job done. So let this be a lesson to any of you. If you give us a hard time and we let Greg go, it's it's all over, you know? So I just, I'm not threatening. I'm just in a nice way.
This is what it is, right? It isn't what it is, and the pit bull rolls.
Yes, all right. Hey, listen, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So so here's a thought, okay, it, a a, an addendum to that. If the town could use some poles, this would probably be a good time to request them and get them for nothing. And here's my, I would love to see. I know we have ponds and stuff like that, but I would love to see a skating rink somewhere.
You know, Greg, you were doing so well. You were doing so well.
Yeah. Use these poles to make a skating rink.
Um, I think we have one planned for New Sweden Road. I forget the number.
Okay, okay.
But uh
There's a lot, there's.
Seriously, um uh, we will look, I'm going to check with John if we do have a need for poles someplace in town.
All right.
Um, and thank you very much. Um, I think I'm going to table the skating rink for now, but thank you for the suggestion.
Well, good.
Greg, anything more?
No, that's it.
Or Chan?
I'm all set this week. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Um, anything else from anyone? Uh, if not, I, the next thing I see is number eleven on the agenda is adjournment. So, so moved, second? All right, thank, thank you, gentlemen, and uh thank you to all the folks that attended the meeting today. Um, and the ideas and suggestions that came up, the concerns, we will address them. Thank you. And uh stay warm, say stay safe.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for coming.